I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Bergman is absent this evening. Vice Chair Bradley?
Here.
And Chair Silverman.
Present.
So the next item on the agenda is the general public comment period. This portion of public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general practice is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is the minutes from the last meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
No.
I don't have any.
I don't have any changes.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize Jesse. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. So we are now going to hold a public hearing. I will read into the record the procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant is then given an opportunity to make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on their proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers are asked to fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker is asked to come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. Both filling out the speaker slips and coming up to the front will assist staff in preparing the minutes. The item is 500 Walnut Street, APN 050-064-040, a request to amend the conditional use permit to allow construction work to occur on weekends. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Just to orient you briefly, the site is located at the corner of Walnut Street and Holly Street. It formerly had a single-family residence at that location, and it's surrounded by multifamily residences as well as a commercial building across the street. July of last year, the planning commission approved a new three-story, four-unit condominium building at this site. At the hearing, neighbors expressed concern with the noise and dust associated with the construction of this development. The developer offered to limit the construction to Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. with no work occurring on the weekends. The planning commission added that as a condition, limiting the construction hours. The development has since sold, and the new owner requests that the planning commission amend the conditional use permit to allow construction work to occur on the weekends. San Carlos Municipal Code limits construction noise activities to the hours of Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with no work on holidays. Staff is supportive of an amendment to allow interior construction activities to occur on the weekends, but only after the exterior building materials have been installed. So that would include the exterior siding and all the windows essentially buttoning up the building so that the interior work then would be less noisy from the adjacent properties. And staff has added a suggested condition, amending condition number three to the conditional use permit certificate. Staff requested the applicant conduct neighborhood outreach, and in addition, the city mailed the official public notice on May 24th and published the notice in the newspaper on May 23rd. I did speak with one neighbor that expressed concern with allowing the weekend construction activities. And here's the motion, should you wish to approve the request. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions, and the applicant is also here this evening.
Does the applicant wish to be heard?
Yeah, I, thanks Lisa for all that application processing and putting it on the agenda. When I initially applied for the amendment, I didn't realize that it would quickly, move so quickly on the agenda. So I requested that, that construction activity on weekends be allowed after the framing is done or when the building is contained. But we have fallen behind because of some reasons. And I request that this weekend hours be allowed even during the framing process, framing construction also, if possible.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter? Are there any questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant. It says that you reached out to your immediate neighbors and none of them had a concern. Which neighbor specifically did you reach out to?
I reached out to two buildings on Walnut and Holly. I mean, the immediate buildings. I mean, they're mostly filled up with tenants. And only one expressed concern because I think the previous owner did some grading work and he did not take adequate measures to control the dust and other stuff. So when I bought the property, the grading and excavation was already done. And I've done whatever possible to mitigate the noise and any, you know, any kind of noise so far.
How long have you owned the property?
I closed in April, so two months.
Two months.
Yeah.
So how much work have you done in that two months?
We are ready to, we have inspection scheduled for foundation on Wednesday. And if that's approved, then we are ready to pour the concrete.
Okay, so in the two months that you've had, that you haven't done any work during, during the work?
No, I've done it. I've done all the farming and all that. Only the excavation was done.
Got it, okay, I see.
And we got delayed because of the late rains and, you know, there was a lot of, I mean, water in the farms and all that, so we had to wait until it dried out.
And since you've owned the property, have there been any complaints about how you've run the construction to your knowledge?
No, everybody that I spoke to, you know, I mean, the dental office across to, I spoke to them, they were in favor of supporting the weekend hours because most of them are not there on the weekend.
Right.
And, and obviously, there would be some discomfort to everybody. I mean, I feel the discomfort of a lot of construction activity happening in the downtown and also on all the IWS that, you know, there's a lot of activity in the Bay Area for the last few years, and it's continuing, it's going to continue.
Let me go ahead and direct-
It doesn't mean that I want to deny other people's rights. So here somebody denied it, and I, as the owner, I want to request it. I mean-
Lisa, can I ask the same question of you? Have there, have there been any complaints since the two months, in the two months that Mr. Sandadi has owned the property?
We have not received any complaints with this developer.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions.
I want to say one thing, though. If anybody complains, we are ready to work with them, you know. It doesn't mean that if you give approval or nonapproval, it doesn't mean that, you know, we, you know, we can get away with it, you know. If there is any concern, or they can always notify us, and we can reduce the noise and the activity also.
And is your construction manager or contact person's information on the construction site posted? Okay.
So if I remember, excuse me, if I remember correctly, the, the building right next door is the one that had the biggest issue. And if I remember correctly, there was a young couple or a couple with young kids that had some allergy issues or breathing issues, as well as the development a couple doors down also had limited construction hours for that same reason. Does that sound familiar?
I do recall definitely the adjacent neighbors were the ones that expressed the concern at the hearing. They indicated that their windows are not insulated, they do not have air conditioning, and so, you know, it's difficult to kind of buffer that construction noise as well as the dust. I believe one person indicated that they have a medical condition, that they were very concerned about the dust, and I agreed, the young child. I'm not familiar, though, with the hours of an adjacent project, if that was also limited, so I can't speak to that.
Yeah, when we talked about this, I think we were looking for a nexus, and the nexus was two doors down on the one that's still being built right now.
I believe that's correct. That would be the 530 Walnut project, and I believe that project also had some reduced construction hours, which were agreed to by the developer.
Any other questions to staff or the applicant?
I'd like to ask the applicant, are you ready to start construction now?
Yeah, we already started, so-
And how long do you expect that it'll take to complete?
I would expect another eight or nine months down the line.
And this is just for my information, not blaming you, but not much happened. This was approved 11 months ago.
I understand that. I don't know what was the issue with the previous owner, but every, ever since I bought it, I mean, except for the late rains and scheduling, I mean, they got backed up because of the foundation, you know, and other product, my subcontractors. So, and this is why I'm even requesting the weekend hours, so that I can expedite the project much quicker, you know?
I understand.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any other questions for the applicant? I see that someone walked in. Were you here to speak on a particular item, sir?
500 Walnut.
Then you came at exactly the right time, because we were about to close the public hearing. If you want to come up to the podium, if you would?
Sure.
And-
I'm sorry, is he the owner of this?
Yes.
Okay. I live nearby, and I'm extremely excited about this project. But what I'm not excited about is, as a homeowner, I've had to look at that unsightly, unesthetic site since the last owner purchased it. I, sorry, I ran in here. I spoke with the last gentleman who purchased the property, and he was so disillusioned by the city of San Carlos and the hoops that the city was making him jump through, it got to a point, he told me, that his bank was finally starting to back out of what it was they were trying to, I guess, whatever the transaction was, to the point that then I saw it on the market again, and I felt really bad for the guy. I think that's really unfortunate. He told me that he had a rendering, and after going back and forth, and of course, this is just one-sided, I've not, I'm not on this project. And he said he presented a rendering, it was approved, and that it was unapproved, and he just went back and forth. And I hope you guys don't subject this gentleman to the exact same thing. It's been two years, I'm sick of looking at it, I drive by it every day, it's very unsightly, it's not pleasing at all to me as a homeowner and to people driving by who are visiting me. I can't wait for something new to come up in San Carlos. I love all the development, I think it's bringing a very new pace into the city, albeit extremely fast-paced, it's inevitable, it's happening, and I hope that the city will allow this gentleman to do, and I don't know him, he, I, I just happened to walk in and happened to see that it was him. I hope that the city will allow him to move forward in a timely fashion and not make him jump through a million hoops and a bunch of red tape so he can get the project underway and done and completed, so I can enjoy looking at it.
And I'm sorry, you don't have to identify yourself, but if you don't mind, for the record, identifying yourself and where you live?
My name is Robert, and I live on Elm Street.
Okay. And you, so you drive by this, this lot all the time?
It was a very unsightly house, and when I saw that it sold and it was going to be several units going up, I was extremely excited. I, I've taken a lot of pride in my home. My home almost looked like that, and now it's one of the more sightly homes along Elm Street. And it's just, and it's just been sitting with this green thing around it, and I know that's happening a lot all over San Carlos, but I had a specific conversation with the gentleman who, who purchased that property back in 2016. And, and just, I guess, the red tape that was involved, and I don't know what he was or wasn't doing to comply with city whatever, but I hope that this gentleman, and when I, when I came in, I briefly heard you, Mr. Bradley, saying something was approved 11 months ago, and why wasn't this? Well, it sounds like, I don't know what that, you were talking about, but it sounds like the previous owner was trying to get things rolling, and it was just continuously stopped, to the point that I honestly don't know if he was forced to sell the-
No, so he, his project was approved 11 months ago, or seven, whatever it was, 11 months ago, with conditions. So this is, there's no red tape, it's black and white, what they have to do. So, you know, building code is what the building code is, the require, so this, he had gone through that process. What it sounds like to me is that he just wasn't, for some, whatever reason, maybe his financing fell through, which happens often.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, you know, when it comes to written conditions, this gentleman is actually asking for more ti, more construction hours. The previous developer had agreed to not work on the weekends because-
Was that a city order?
Yeah, it was, it was a voluntary as part of the conditional use permit, so he voluntarily did that. We do have developments that have been restricted, but that was not a forced condition, that was, when we had the public hearing, he, he agreed to do that. So now this gentleman who bought the development is wanting to do it, wanting to do construction on Saturdays and Sundays, but we do have adjacent buildings that have health, that have spoken to health conditions in the units next door. So that's what we're really talking about today. But the development doesn't change, the terms are what they are, the plan is already approved, it's just this one thing that we're really talking about, which is extended timeframe to build on the weekends, which was not part of the original approval.
Yeah, and, and I know, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up, I know there's also a project getting ready to happen right here at the 500 block of Elm Street. Same thing, the house is going to be torn down, multi-units, and I received a letter from the city alerting that this was going to happen, and I reached out to the owner personally, and I said, I hope this can move along, and he says, it's going to depend on the city, so.
In all fairness to the city, the city always gets blamed for everything, but there is a process. It's not, it's not, as a matter of fact, the first comment that this gentleman made was, he was surprised on how fast his approval, how quickly it got on the agenda. So it's not always consistent, it always seems like it's a long time, but it also depends on what other projects we're working on. But this gentleman just made the request, and he's on the agenda. So that kind of talks to the opposite of, of the argument that the city makes, it's very difficult, but-
Well, I mean, it might be his new project, but it's an old project, but-
And there might be things on the building side that we just don't deal with and don't, don't quite understand as far as whether the applicant is meeting certain inspections, but that's neither here nor there for our-
I can certainly speak to you separately about this development, if you're interested, and give you some more insight, if you'd like.
That's actually, I just wanted to be heard, and I hope that it can get moving. I would love to be able to look at something that's sightly versus unsightly, going home every day. Thanks for your time, good luck.
All right, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
Yes. Discussion among the commission?
Yeah, I mean, well, there's, the advantage of weekend hours, of course, is that presumably the project will get done faster. So there is an advantage about that, but sometimes, for developers' sake, we're victims of timing, and the city is under a lot of construction fatigue and wants to see some of this reined in so that the residents can enjoy their neighborhoods and environment during this boom. And I remember the concerns being, being fairly significant, though, though I do note that one of them was about grading and dirt, and that that part is essentially over. So, I mean, I would be amenable to doing interior construction hours, I'm, I'm less convinced about doing exterior work on the weekends. But that's me.
Anybody else?
So, yeah, I'd like to add on that. I'm somewhat in agreement with you on Angela. If I remember correctly, too, the development right around the corner might have been Magnolia, maybe? Or that also had weekend, limited weekend, I mean, we have development, we have like three developments that are all around there, that, that have similar conditional approvals with limited construction. Now, I know we're kind of under the, behind the eight ball on this one, because it's been sitting there for a long time, and it is an eyesore, everybody, my, my office is literally right around the corner, so I see it every day, and I see no movement every day. So I get that, but it doesn't, to me, it doesn't negate the issues of the residents right next door to, to of those developments, really, they're kind of sandwiched in to two developments that are, have taken a while. So I'd be in favor of, after, after walls are in, basically, sightings in, to be able to allow for weekend construction, but not up to that point. Your letter to us, too, I know, I know it has been raining and stuff like that, but it, it almost seems like you thought you were going to be further along as well. So it's kind of a, like a testament to kind of what we're thinking, you know, what our thought process is right now. We're not even where he thought he was going to be, the new owner. So I don't know if that, I mean, I know that's going to slow it down a little bit, but I think in trying to preserve that condition somewhat, I think that that would be my favor.
Somewhere in the report, I read that other nearby properties under construction were permitted to work on the weekends. Is that, can you give me any idea of the percentage?
Well, the larger developments that aren't immediately adjacent to residential, so Wheeler Plaza, there's some development on El Camino, Transit Village, another project on El Camino, they would have the standard work hours.
By single and multi, some of them?
Some of them, yeah.
So I'm going to oppose any change, and it's based partly on principle. We're an evidence-based body, and we had a hearing where evidence was presented, where a large number of people came out and spoke. And whether it should be this way or not, I mean, as we all know, there tends to be a little bit of horse trading on these things. And, you know, folks, developers agree to placate the neighbors by agreeing to limit hours or do other things that make things better for people. And this was a concession that the developer made. Had they not made that, we may have asked for other concessions of the developer. If, if I had more evidence that there was a significant outreach to the same people who were here last time, and they indicated that they were fine with it, well, then I would feel differently. But basically, we have a developer, and no offense to you, sir, you know, who bought a development knowing what the conditions were, and, you know, comes here asking us to change a condition that we, that we, that the prior developer agreed to, and that we, that we added as a condition of approval, based on nothing, other than they want it. And to me, that doesn't seem like an evidence-based decision. If the rest of you were inclined to, to allow some construction in the interior when the building was completely constructed on the exterior, I mean, that doesn't sound unreasonable, but I would probably limit it to Saturdays, give those folks at least a break, you know, one day, you know, where they don't have to listen to hammering and nails, because even without power tools, trust me, they're going to be able to hear the construction all day long, at a day when they're, you know, at home, trying to enjoy their home with their families. So, you know, I'm inclined to vote no. I don't think I could be convinced otherwise. If you are inclined to make a motion, I would suggest you consider my comments.
Limit, limiting?
Yep. So with that, you-
Is there anybody that wants to make a-
Staff want to, there's the motion, anybody want to make it?
Yeah.
Or some variation thereof?
I'll make it. I move that the planning commission approve the request to amend the conditional use permit to allow interior construction work to occupy Saturdays in compliance with the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 9.30.070.
I'll second that.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
And Chair Silverman.
No.
But it passes, three to one.
There you go.
I think that completes that one. God, I'm starting to feel a little melancholy. We're getting towards the end of the end.
Oh. It's burning me up.
Report, report on recent city council actions.
Staff doesn't have anything to report to the commission this evening.
Do any of my fellow planning commissioners have anything to say?
No, but I reserve my time for the next meeting.
Me as well.
All right. Anything for you, sir?
I was able to give a presentation at the Association of Psychological Science, who held their international conference in San Francisco, and my paper was on healthy cities, environmental psychologists, public health officials, and city planners working together to promote better physical and mental health in cities.
How awesome is that?
Last week.
You actually know stuff.
Yeah.
What?
May we receive a copy?
You're telling us this now?
Perhaps a signed copy?
How are we, how are we doing?
Yes.
Not so well.
Give us the, give us the two-minute version of how St. Carlos is doing.
I look forward to reading the paper.
Okay.
Is there any correspondence that wasn't in our packet?
No.
So I understand, I understand that they have three new commissioners already picked out?
That is correct. We are moving on to Letter D.
Is there a one present? No? No, okay, planning staff comments, reports?
There is one present-
Yes.
-this evening.
Yay.
Soon to be joining the planning commission is David Roof.
That's correct.
Good, yay. Welcome.
Congratulations.
I see how the experts do.
You've had many years to-
Your standards are, your standards are quite low. It's how I like people.
So moving on to pla, excuse me, planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects, I did want to let the planning commission and RDRC members of which one is here this evening, but because this is televised, I wanted to say it out loud, is that we want to have a special joint meeting between the planning commission and RDRC at the next meeting, June 18th, which will be the last meeting for commissioners Gutierrez, Harper-Peterson, and Chair Silverman, to join us for some refreshments, some light refreshments prior to the regular hearing at 7:00 p.m. So because of the Brown Act, that will all be publicly noticed, but you are all invited to celebrate you, so we hope you can come a little bit earlier. We'll have some refreshments just right outside the doors in the entrance hall, so that we can recognize you. It's for staff, I know the city council will be providing, giving out the proclamations on June 9th, so staff will be there, excuse me, July 9th, which staff will be there as well, but we wanted to have a little something for you for the last meeting. And again, this will be June 18th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., but you don't have to show up at 6:00 on the dot, you know, when you, when you arrive, you will be welcomed.
Thank you.
The other update that I wanted to provide this commission with, and use the opportunity, because again, this is being televised, is that since the study session on the proposed changes to RS 6 that we had on May 21st, staff has been working to address all the comments and requests. We are also in the process of reaching out and going to be working with and meeting with the new commissioners to bring them up to speed. So we'll have meetings in June to do that with the new commissioners. We are also going to be meeting with the local architects. This, there was a request from the local architects to meet with them, so we're going to be doing that this week. So during the month of June, staff will be having meetings to kind of, you know, circle back on these issues and work with specific stakeholders. And then we're looking at the month of July to have a special meeting with the planning It potentially is going to be July 25th, but we may settle on July 24th, so it'll be the 24th or the 25th. And that information will be available on the project website, and we will also be using all the tools that we have to make sure that the public is noticed. And just for the record, the project website is www.cityofsancarlos.org/singelfamilyhousesize. So if you go to the site, you will be able to continue to be updated and see the- So if you go to the site, you will be able to continue to be updated and see the latest and greatest on the progress of that project. And you're also invited to come attend those future meetings, your input is welcomed. So again, that's just a little update on that project. Other than that, I don't have any further updates, other than we will see you on June 18th at your next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.